And now, a workshop of the McAllen City Commission. All workshops are open to the public in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. These workshops allow for detailed staff presentations.
I'd like to call this workshop to order. It's Monday, July 14th, just 4:08 PM on the clock. First item on the agenda. Do you have any questions for staff from any of the commission?
No, Mayor Procham.
City Manager?
Okay, Mayor Procham. We wanted to bring back an update on the status at Camp McAllen. We're getting that wrapped up and I think as part of the conversation, just to refresh amenities that will be available and some of the fees that we'd like your feedback on before we officially cut the ribbon out there. So, Danny?
Yes, sir. Thank you, City Manager. Mayor Procham, Commissioners, thank you for having me this afternoon. Just like City Manager said, I'm just going to do a quick rundown of Camp McAllen and update. We're looking to have that ribbon cutting this Wednesday at 9:00 AM, and so we're pretty excited about that. And so as we go through, if you have any questions, please let me know. So park hours, real quick, we're just gonna be closed on Mondays for maintenance, and this is the same thing that we do for the McAllen Nature Center. Of course, things can change in the future, but as of right now, this is what myself and the team is looking at. And then Tuesday through Sunday, we're open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Keep in mind that 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, we'll go more in depth on the next slide. The 8:00 PM is based on season, so when it's sunset, we have different sunsets during out throughout the year, we will be making those changes based on those. And so if we go to the next slide, you'll see this is office and rental hours, and we do have the summer, fall, spring, and winter seasons on there. So summertime from June to August will be open from Tuesday to Friday from 9:00 to 12:00, and that will be office hours. And then back from 4:00 to 8:00. During the fall and spring, September through November, Tuesday through Friday, 3:00 to 8:00, and then Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 to 5:00. And that 8:00 for the closing, that again, that might change just depending on sunset here in McAllen. And then winter, December through February, Tuesday through Friday from 3:00 to 6:00, and then Saturday, Sunday, 9:00 to 5:00. So we're, this is just office hours for rentals. The park will be open again from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, so anybody can walk in anytime and use the amenities, fishing, and the trails. But if they want to rent fishing poles, if they want to rent bows, then we have these office hours for them to rent. So the park again will be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but office hours and rentals will be during this time. And this time is that we're looking at due to staffing, and so looking at other campgrounds, other campsites, this is kind of what we're following and mimicking.
There was never going to be a camping, a total camping?
Yes, sir. Camping is gonna happen at night, and we'll get into that once I get to that slide, but yes, sir, we'll have camping mostly for right now, will happen on Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, the weekends, but we will have opportunities for that.
You're gonna explain it later?
Yes, sir. So what we're looking right here is two of our amenities, the gazebo and the restroom. So if you see on the right-hand side, your left hand, that's the gazebo. It is a 40 by 40 gazebo where we want residents coming into these, into this park to have a break from the sun. Educational purposes here, if we do bring in school groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, this is a meeting point that they can come to. The restrooms there is a men's, women's restroom with a child changing table, there you go, I drew a blank, changing table in the men's and women's restroom, and then we do have a family room that's in the middle that has an adult changing table as well. Next slide, we'll go over and we'll look at the kayak dock, and so as you can see in this first photo, to my right is a kayak canoe launch that is ADA accessible. In the middle picture, you'll see a closer-up picture of that with the ramp leading into the water. And then on the right picture, the third picture, is a canoe kayak launch, regular launch boat. What you don't see in this photo is off to the left of the kayak, of the ADA kayak launch, it's kind of like a beach access to where kayakers can go and dock off the beach access there as we do at Fireman's. Not as big, but we mimic the same thing over at Fireman's Park. The next slide shows two fishing docks. One is located on the north side, one is on the south side, so this gives opportunities for those that want to go out to fish at the lake, two options to fish off of. They are pretty wide in length, and so it's a good space for multiple users to fish at the same time on these docks.
Is there any shade?
We don't have any shade right now. There is a tree line that goes there, but future phases, we do plan on bringing in some shade structures, and so that's phase, prior phases coming up.
The kid that we have over here?
Yes, sir. Team identified that, and so those are future plans that we plan to go on.
There's another guard rail.
Excuse me?
Guard rail?
Guard rail? So we were, the team and I were discussing this. There is a lip on that dock. We did come back to see, you know, for safety purposes, if there was gonna be rails that's still in the plans to purchase, but you'll see a lip there that will prevent, let's say, if somebody's in a wheelchair, to go off that wheelchair. A lot of the other amenities that we were looking at at campgrounds, at other sites, didn't have rails, and so again, those are just options that we can go in the future to put if needed.
How deep is the water in that area right there?
Right there, it's very shallow. You're looking at maybe six feet to seven feet at max in the middle depth, and then comes out shallow near the edging. This will be a catch-and-release program. We are following Texas Fish, Parks, and Wildlife with 17 and older having a license to fish at the lake. Here are just a couple of sample signage that we're putting up as we speak around the facility to notify campgoers of rules for all of the amenities that we have, and so this one dictates the kayak dock rules and the fishing rules.
So people can rent the kayaks, or they can bring their own kayaks?
Exactly. They can either rent or bring their own.
Oh, they can bring their own?
Yes, sir. Just like at Fireman's Park, we're following the same protocol there.
There's no fee for whoever owns?
No, sir. No, sir. It's free to the public if you have your own equipment.
All right.
So that would go same with fishing, kayaking, and archery.
Oh, archery, if you have your own equipment?
Correct.
Oh, that's...
Yes.
Swimming's not allowed, correct? Swimming is not allowed?
I wouldn't recommend swimming, no, sir. We do not allow swimming at any of our facilities. Here's a complete picture of the archery range that is complete. There on the left-hand side, you'll see the actual range with the berm in the back. The range goes from 18 meters to 50 meters in length, so you're looking at about 60 feet to 164 feet. We have five different bays there, which we could probably fit about 15 lanes within that, and then of course, the ADA accessibility lanes, we would be able to put in there. They're looking for like a 60-inch by 60-inch area for ADA. So we have plenty of room out there to host that, to host tournaments, programming, and then open gym, what we call open shoots, for anybody that wants to go out.
What general direction is the range facing?
Range is, the orientation is east-west. So you're looking at, if you're looking at the first picture, you're looking at going west, shooting west.
What's behind the berm?
Behind the berm is wooded area, and then a trail does extend out from the south side of the, if you see the second picture, on the south side of that archery range is a trail that's leading out to the drainage going west. Once we have this open to the public for shooting, we will close portions of the trail down just to make sure that nobody's in that vicinity when we're shooting. Eventually, this will be fenced off as well. We'll take the master-designed fence that we have around the campground to go ahead and put around this archery so that way it is closed off and controlled.
So Danny, so when somebody else, let's say you shoot all your arrows, and then you're gonna go get them, what, are you gonna stop?
So when we do, when we do that, you know, it's like, you know, golf, we'll pause for a minute or two for people to go pick up their arrows and then come back. Those that are handicapped and need assistance will go out there and retrieve, staff will go out there and retrieve their arrows for them. So this is what we're looking for at the archery range hours. Again, Monday will be closed to maintenance, Tuesdays, Tuesday to Friday, 9:00 to 12:00, 4:00 to 6:00, Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 to 5:00. And again, those follow the office hours and rental hours that we're gonna provide. Okay, the next slide, we're gonna take a look at the campsite. Again, this is a 12 camp pad site with three of those camp pads being ADA accessible. We do have a fire pit in the middle. As you can see in the first photo, the second photo over, shows the overview of the campground, and then the third photo shows you an up-close photo of what those camp pads in the campground looks like. And so again, we do have a fire pit, that's about a 5 by 8 in the center of this campground, and then we will have two barbecue pits closer to the entrance away from trees that can be accessible by the users of the campground.
How many sites?
12.
12?
With three of them being ADA accessible. And this is just a, in a sample of the campsite signage and what it will look like when residents are entering the campground. So again, this will be locked off until we actually have users in the campground, and then it will be permanently locked until we have that.
That didn't transpose to the street properly, but it did enter properly your packets?
Here's signage of walking trails. You are here signage, we'll have three to four of these up around the facility here, and it shows you just the different trails that we have. If you take a look at the first three, the blue, the brown, and the green, those are man-made trails that are DG, decomposed granite. The purple trail around the archery and going into the back will be man-made trails, secondary trails that users can walk on. And of course, on this one, it doesn't show, I don't know if it's the blue, but we do have from the parking lot going north and south, and then east, or going west, is a perimeter trail that's made out of decomposed granite, that if bikers want to use that trail to get out to the canal, they can go ahead and use that trail as well. Some more samples of walking trail signage, fishing dock. We did name the trails, so users will be able to enjoy those amenities, and then welcome Camp McAllen to show you the different routes to get to different amenities on the trails. Parking lot photos here, and so this is the, this will be the primary parking lot, which is located on the north side of the campground. We do have a secondary parking lot that's within the campground. If this one gets filled, then we have a secondary overfill inside the campground as well. Here's a photo of what the office looks like. The team went in, used the existing infrastructure there, and converted one of the rooms into a office, and so those users that want to come and rent will come to this site first, rent their equipment, and then head on out onto the campground site. Oh, no, what happened to this screen? Okay, I don't know what happened to this screen, but... Should've been your packets, this is gonna be, did it come out right on the packet?
Yeah.
Okay. And so if we're taking a look at the rental fees, this is what we're gonna recommend to the committee or to the commission. Some of these pricing are the same as we do at the H2O Hut at Fireman's Park Town Lake. So the double kayak 30-minute will be $20, single kayak 15. We will include a fishing combo at $10, a fishing rod, if you don't have one, five, a compound bow plus five arrows for an hour and a half is 15, a recurve bow with five arrows for an hour and a half is 10, arrows pack of five, $3 per person, camping tent, a four-person tent will be 15 a night, camping tent for six persons 25 a night, camping pad with lantern 12, and a lantern for five. And so when we were, when the team was getting these quotes, we looked at different cities, City of Mesquite, Parks and Rec, and what they did with their camping program. We did look at about five state parks and what their fees were, and so a lot of this, we did a comparison with those other cities and those parks to get our fees. Again, we want our fees to be affordable, and so by looking at that, this is what the Parks and Rec team is gonna be recommending.
At the campsites, is there electrical outlets and water stigots?
There is not.
Oh, there isn't one?
So you're gonna, if you're gonna go out there, you're gonna...
Bring in...
Yes. It's gonna be, you're gonna rug it out there like...
Authentic experience.
Authentic experience, but if you need to go back home, it's only like a two-minute drive to your house. That's the beauty of this campground.
Or we can just hook up a garden hose to the mayor's uncle of his house.
There you go. Yes, sir.
Sir, will you have security at night?
We will have security overnight, and that's logistics that we're still trying to figure out, but camping-wise, we will have security there overnight along with personnel.
How many secure?
Will probably just, as of right now, have one. What we plan to do is if we do have camping groups overnight, once the park is closed, we will lock the facility up, the gate up, and so once you're there, you're there.
Unless you want to take the two-minute drive?
Unless you want to take a two-minute. And then we will have concessions out there, so concession fees is there listed, you know, we'll sell water, sports drinks, chips, ice cream, and bait as well for those that need it for fishing, so... Thank you. Any other questions?
All this is set to open?
Well, we'll have the ribbon cutting Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 9:00 AM there on site. We plan to open it up on Tuesday, January 22nd, July, I'm sorry, July 22nd. January 22nd, 2026. No, July 22nd, that Tuesday, because we're closed Monday, but we'll phase it in opening, and so, but we do plan to open it on Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Norm's here. Okay. Ready, Norma?
Yes. Thank you.
Do you have a presentation you need to say?
Yes. I'm thinking, right? Yes. No, yeah. Yes. They're just looking for a presentation.
Sorry. She said she was gonna have a point, didn't she?
I'm here to present the working clearance administrative updates. In meeting with contractors and our two home builders associations, they expressed, you know, some concerns, and we took a look at them and made some adjustments to our administrative Now, the working clearance is a procedure granted for temporary electrical power to meter enclosures for residential structures. to meters enclosures for residential structures. This is something the city has implemented to assist our contractors. It is designed to assist our contractors and owners by allowing additional time to complete necessary building permit conditions required to obtain a certificate of occupancy. Now, this working clearance is not to occupy the structure or to place furniture or any type of inventory. This is only so they can continue completing that structure and testing equipment.
And what's the problem?
I'm sorry?
And what is the problem?
That's what I'm going to be addressing in the next slides. Yes. No, no problem. Previously, our working clearance process was that when they would call to request for a working clearance, we would grant them 30 days so they can complete the project. And then they would also leave a deposit and that deposit would be refunded once they would obtain their certificate of occupancy. Now, in meeting with the homeowners associations and the contractors, they expressed concerns and references duration that we were permitting them, which was the 30 days and also the deposit. Those were the two main concerns that were brought up to us. Now, in looking into and doing assessments with other cities, comparison with other cities, what we found out is that other cities, unlike the City of McAllen, that we tend to be more developer friendly, we allow them to call in this working clearance at any point of the construction. Unlike the other adjacent cities, they only allow it at the final. Some of them is because it's mandatory. We do not require them to connect power. They can continue their construction. You know, not necessarily do they need permanent power. They can do it with, you know, in the old days, they would do it with a temporary pole and they would do it with a generator. This became more popular during COVID when the demand or there was a shortage in the supply. So that's when it became more popular, mostly with residential contractors. So in saying that, that's when, you know, the concerns started coming in. You know, on the allotted time that we would give for that working clearance, you know, the utility companies were taking up to three, three to six months to connect them. So in looking into that, you know, we started looking at other cities and other cities would only do it at the final stage. This is the only time that they would allow for power to be connected to that structure. So what we, what we started doing or we looked into it for the duration, that that was one of the concerns, we said, okay, we're going to do during the framing stage, which you have a picture, an illustration of what a framing is. At that point, we were, the duration would be 90 days, allowing them enough time so they can finish their project. And mostly even though this is for commercial and residential, it has taken more advantage by our residential contractors. The next one would be at the infiltration stage. As you can see infiltration, this is where the drywall is already up and all exterior penetrations need to be sealed. And this is having to do with energy and we're also having to meet state requirements. So at this stage, we're allowing them 60 days to completion. The next one is at a final. Now, at the final, which this is like I mentioned, the other cities are allowing, it's at 90% completion, construction completion. And for residential, the driveway needs to be in place in order for us to clear that power. And the reason that this is very important is because the utility companies, this is just an agreement that we have with the utility companies, even though we consider it temporary power, for the utility company, it's permanent power. Once they connect power to that structure, it's permanent for them. For us, it's just temporary. So that's the reason that we do make them sign an agreement. So they won't occupy. We've had in the past where they do occupy, the contractor does allow the owner to occupy the structure and then it becomes more challenging for us, you know, to final that project.
Who allows them occupancy?
This is the contractor. The contractor allows them to occupy.
We've had cases where.
No, it's not.
They never closed the permit.
They never closed the permit.
Okay, they just didn't close the permit.
Right, well, meaning that we didn't do any inspections in order and issue a certificate of occupancy and they let the owner occupy that structure. The other concern was the deposit. Now, like I mentioned, you know, other cities don't require deposit. The reason that we do require deposit is for, you know, being occupied. It is stipulated in our agreement that they're not to occupy. And if they do, or they don't comply by the date that is in the contract, then they forfeit that deposit. And that deposit can be used, you know, for us, of course, the deposit amount, the minimum is 500, the maximum is 5,000. Now, in reality, in today's construction world, you can't finish a construction structure with that. But that's what we have and it is stipulated that it's either we could use the money to finish out the structure, to complete it, or we can use it for legal avenues that we. So that's the reason that we charge that deposit now.
Okay, so 5%.
Yes.
So on a hundred thousand dollars construction.
Well, it's 90, the percentage of.
Remaining.
The remaining, whatever's left, and then it's 5% of that remaining construction value.
Still, you're going to reach 5,000 pretty quickly.
Well, it all depends. The further away they are from obtaining that certificate of occupancy, they might reach depending on the value. Now, keep in mind, this is a process that was implemented back in the 90s and this is based on basically a 1,200 square foot home back then. That was the average square footage of a home. Now, your homes, your average is like 2,500. But that's what it was based on, the deposit amounts. So once they obtain their certificate of, well, this is at the framing or the infiltration, that this is when we're requiring a deposit. Now, if they're at the final and they're almost at 90% completion, and this is, mind you, this is only for residential, they're needing to have that driveway in place. If they do, then we will not require deposit. They just need to come and sign the agreement. We're just being in line with the rest of our adjacent municipalities. That's what they do, but they do make it a requirement. It is mandatory for them to have power at the final. We don't. And like I mentioned before, you know, at any time they can call in that working clearance, we do not dictate at what phase of construction for them to call it in. It is also used for commercial, but mainly it's being utilized by our residential contractors.
And it's, I talked to some of the builders, Tony, the new deposit kind of minimum and maximum is much better than it was before. They were getting hit with deposits upwards of 15, 20. Some of them were saying they had really large deposits.
This is what it's always been since we implemented since the 90s.
Some of them had said they were having to put very large deposits and I assume they were getting it really early?
No, it's never been more than $5,000. It caps off at $5,000 regardless. You know, the percentage, you know, calculated, you know, we have where a threshold where it's just at 5,000, it caps off at 5,000.
I think the problem was that they were having to come in and renew it so frequently with the 30.
Because now it's 90 days.
It can be 90 days.
Okay, what do you mean it can be?
Well, yeah, it all depends at what phase of construction. If they do it at the framing stage, there has to be some type of structure for the utility company to place that metering device. So that's the earliest would be at a framing stage.
And that's the changes that she's proposed and made is that instead of just allowing it only at the 90%, she's allowing it at framing, which was allowed before, but now you have 90 days for framing. If they do it at framing, 60 days if it's an infiltration. So those are additional options for them.
And then, of course, this deposit is refundable. Once they obtain their certificate of occupancy, then we automatically refund that deposit.
Now, do they have to come for it or is it, we issue out the occupancy? Can we just send the check at that time?
Oh, yes. This is done, this is done through finance. We submit all the paperwork to finance and then depending on where it falls on the check run that they have, I believe it's twice a month. So it all depends when, you know, the submittal falls and then finance will refund that money to them. Now, let's say that they don't complete their project by the time that is stipulated on that agreement. We do have extensions, however, they do need to call us in so we can go make, or we can conduct another inspection and make an assessment of that structure. By doing that, then, you know, we determine, okay, what phase of construction they're at. And then that's, you know, we'll do another contract, you know, with the date, making that adjustment on the duration of that agreement. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, are we getting, are we getting better automated? In other words, can, does everything have to be that they have to come into the center and, or can some of this thing be automated, which a permit, not a permit, whatever it is, can it be automated in which they could, you know, put it in our system and not have to physically be here?
Currently, that's what we're working on. I know that we're doing with Oracle, with the new permitting software. That's what we're working on, getting our process all automated. So that is something that we're looking towards the near future.
How near?
How near?
That is the number, the number one.
I don't know, Robert, is Robert here?
The number one complaint is.
They can apply online.
Yes.
Yeah, there is a permit portal.
Yes, we do have.
Not when they have to give a deposit or whatever, what I hear.
Right, no, you're correct.
I don't build homes. I don't know, okay?
Yes.
But the number one thing is that even to get electrical, your electrical permit and stuff or, you know, get a new renter in, the other one closes there. You know, the electricity has to be, you know, you're going to do some little remodeling, a little cleaning. You need electricity. Here comes the owner. He can't do it online. It would be very easy to do it online and he can't.
Well, we have other processes other than the working clearance. This is just one process for construction. Now, I know you mentioned something about cleaning or our business, you know, potential business that want to open up here in McAllen. We do have a process or that we do provide for no fee. This is just a courtesy inspection that we do. We coordinate it with other departments. And, you know, it's just maintaining that structure. You know, planning might be involved, the health department might be involved, pre-treatment, of course, our department. But it's various departments that do get involved depending on the use of that structure. And if they do meet the minimum requirements for them, then we'll go ahead and connect power with no agreement with, you know. However, if they are pending one of the requirements for one of the departments, then we do ask them to sign an agreement with us. But that is a service that we provide. Other cities do charge for something similar that we call a building occupancy. Other cities do charge for that. We don't, that is a service that we do provide, you know, our business community, if they want to open up a business in an existing building. Any other questions? Thank you.
Your motion to recess to executive session?
Don't move.
This concludes the workshop of the McAllen City Commission. Workshops are held every second and fourth Monday of the month, convening at 4 p.m. at the McAllen City Commission chamber on the third floor at McAllen City Hall.
Notice that the lighting of the projector may be much lighter and harder on the ice. So if you feel like you want a copy of these PowerPoint presentations, we're more than happy to go ahead and share those with you as well. So for this landlord engagement, we have two upcoming rental assistance programs, and they will vary based on the grant. So here, the program overview and